Good evening and welcome to the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting December 16th, 2013 with you kindly standing, joining me in salute is our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under public announcements tonight, I have a very unique situation. It's obviously one that I cherish because usually the stuff we do here is not fun and it's not very rewarding, and this happens to be very rewarding. And we have two events here. We have two gentlemen for Abington's best, well deserved, and we're going to honor them first. And then we have two firefighters that the chief has recognized in the response to the fire at Sharav that we're going to recognize right after that. And after those, that occurs, we'll take a short recess. So, at first, I'd like to go to Abington's best, and I don't know, I have a proclamation to be read here, but I understand there was a couple of people that might wanted to speak before we did that, so I don't know. Never shy to a microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sean Riley, and for the viewers at home, we're all here tonight to recognize Mr. Bill Davis and Mr. Norm Casely, who have been longtime volunteers for not just Abington High School sports, but the entire town of Abington. Any of you who've watched anything on cable TV has seen the handiwork of Norm Casely and Bill Davis. And I'm here on behalf of all the students who've gone before us for many, many years, and especially on behalf of the Greenway Boosters. President, Mr. Nagel couldn't be here tonight, but I know he's reached out and talked to both Norm and Bill to thank them for their unbelievable generosity and their efforts. And I'll be brief, but I've had the pleasure of working, Kevin Whalen and I, with Norm and Bill. We've worked with a number of cameramen over the years, but longest with Norm and Bill, and it's been fun. And it's not work for us, it's fun, and it's been a great friendship between us and all the rest of the boosters who work. And I know the kids in Abington really appreciate it, but most importantly, the families in Abington really appreciate Norm and Bill, because after a game, or a parade, or a graduation, or a concert, families can sit down and watch it all together again, and again, and again. And it's just a wonderful thing that Abington is very unique, and we have one of the best, the best pair of videographers out there. And to give you an example of how generous these guys are, got a couple, got a little nervous after a few years that they might eventually get tired of doing it, might want to leave. And I remember specifically talking to Bill, we were gonna, we had to go down to Mashpee for a football game, and the weather forecast was pretty cold, very cold. And I said, "Bill, if you don't want to go, we don't have to go, you know, you take a break, you're here every weekend, you do everything for years." And he said, "No." He said, "Because I want to do every game I can, because I don't want to miss the game that some young boy or girl has the game of their life, and it's not on video for their family to see, so I'm going." So, we went to Mashpee, and we've been to every other game since then. And likewise, and just to show you how, they're two peas in a pod, I talked to Norm, and as many of you may know, Norm's at all the games and parades and things with Bill. And after that two-hour parade or that five-hour game, Norm goes home and edits everything, and it takes him literally two days to download everything, to put in the graphics, and then he puts, for football, puts in instant replays of every single play throughout the entire game. And for any of you who've dabbled with video technology, that takes hours and hours and hours of work. And again, I said to Norm, I said, "You know, if you need to cut back, you know, I don't want to overuse you here, we want you to stay with us. You don't have to put a replay in every single play, just do it on the touchdowns or the big plays." And he looked at me and he said, "No, because on every play, some kid from Abington is doing a great job with a great block, or a great soccer kick, or the best pass they've had, or the best play they've made all season. So, I want that kid to have the opportunity to show it off to their friends and their family." And it just shows you that these guys think about, they never think about themselves, they're always out there in the cold weather and the rainy weather while Kevin and I are in the press box, all, you know, bundled up and warm. And the things they bring home to the families in Abington, we are just very, very lucky. So, I am very proud and happy that the selectmen are nominating and recognizing Norm Casely and Bill Davis, and you couldn't pick two better guys, so congratulations to both of you, and thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to echo those words by Mr. Riley. I've worked with both these guys as friends, and certainly in the volunteer effort in most of the sports. I can say my relationship with them goes back to the 2000s, but Bill, you know, helping with the baseball games, and Norm, you know, your story, but going down to Howard in the middle of the winter when it was always snowing, Norm was always ready to go. You know, other things for me is with Norm, innovation, that our sports broadcasts are, in my opinion, the best on the South Shore. Norm's introduced the highlight, slow motion, which the kids absolutely love. And a particular note to both is, you know, character of an individual is service to others, and both these guys have embraced that to the community. So, for me, and I think the rest of the residents, and certainly the Greenway Boosters of the sports, thank you for your service. I would like to, just for a minute, just recognize, you know, Bill's wife is here, Lynn, his son Devon, who was a heck of a ballplayer, and his dad, stepdad Bob. And Norm, I think your wife Helen is here, so congratulations, because they are the ones that have been put up with their service to the community, so they deserve a round of applause, too.
Just as a parent, I really, really want to thank them, and just be so much. My mother is at home watching, and she can't get out of the house, and she knows every kids meeting, every play, every everything, she knows everyone in the country, and a lot of people at home watch them, and she gets to watch all the things. So, as a parent, you just really, dearly, all the time, and they really need to watch them, to everybody, and really get to watch them, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Could I just say one thing? On top of what Bill does for cable TV, he also serves as the kind of a host at the community garden, and turns that over every year, and does a tremendous amount of work up there, and that's all on his own time, which I know takes a tremendous amount of time, and the people who use that garden, I think, appreciate that very, very much, Bill, so thank you for that also.
And he has this dance that he does every once in a while on TV. There's no doubt that the broadcast is really something to behold, but there are a lot of residents, and I'm one of them, that after you listen to Sean and Kevin announcing the game, you really appreciate the video, because you really kind of keep them honest and know what's going on, so, thank you. If there's nobody else who'd like to speak, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Abington is a small town which boasts a vibrant community of residents who enjoy volunteering their time and their skills toward making the town of Abington a truly wonderful place to which to live. Whereas Bill and Norm are such volunteers who have donated many years of public service to the residents of Abington by bringing various community events, sports, games, meetings, concerts, and championships into the living rooms of Abington families throughout the lens of his video cameras. Bill and Norm contribute their time behind the scenes with little public recognition, while providing a service to the community to help promote and publicly celebrate the successes of other residents. Whereas the work of Bill and Norm connects parents with their children, families in their schools, and the residents with the town by bringing the members of the celebration of Abington into our homes through local cable television. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby present this Abington's best proclamation on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, recognizing Bill Davis and Norm Casely with gratitude and appreciation for their volunteer service to the community, and with our thanks for making our town a better place to live. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We like to stay behind the scenes and don't do a lot of talking. I'll step up and try and do some announcing at a basketball game if our announcers show up late, because we all work, and we all got to try and get there as soon as we can. But it's been fun. I've been only doing it for about 10 years, if you count the Mohawks football. Bill's been doing it longer than that. I think I kind of picked up. I think Steve Hitchcock did Mohawks after you did, and I picked it up, and I found it to be fun. Someone made a comment to me that the Mohawks' coverage was so boring without any announcing, and I didn't feel up to saying anything back then, so I just left it boring. Then, as my kids got into high school, and, you know, I started paying attention to what Sean and Kevin have been doing all these years, I thought, you know, "How can I get in on that team?" Because they had stopped doing the multiple-camera shoots, and I thought, "Well, maybe I could do something new with sidelines." And I do computer stuff all the time, so I started doing that replay stuff. People, I think Bill didn't like it at first, but he's gotten used to it, now he loves it, right?
The first one, I wasn't sure, the second one, I says, "How can we go without this now?" It was fantastic.
So, it's been fun, and I enjoy helping out, especially the people that can't make it to the games and can see it on cable, or I can make DVDs for them. It's rewarding to help people out that way.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, if I had to start this all over again, I'd certainly do it again. I absolutely love it. Those that can't play, coach. Those that can't coach, fill. So, but I've always loved it, and I do it not only for the people in my town, but I do it for the people in the other towns, too. I go to the other towns, and a lot of the people know my name, and they come up, "Oh, thank you, we love playing in Abington," because we get to watch it on video, especially with Verizon covers most of the South Shore. So, I just, I just love sports, and it's great working with Sean, you know, the Riley family. What they have is contagious. I think this town is filled full of a bunch of cogs to help this gear move on, and I just, I just see more and more people stepping up to the plate. I know the town's called, we call it Land of Many Beaver. I think it's Land of Many Volunteers, and I just absolutely love this town, and I'm honored by this, and it's been great working with Sean, and Kevin, and Tom. Tom does the announcing for the football games, he did the announcing for the hockey games for years. It's a little harder to do, but again, if I had to do it all over again, I would have kept on doing it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, very nicely done.
One other thank you, I'd like to say thank you to Justin for allowing us to hold on to the gear. It makes it so much easier to be able to just have this gear and have such great equipment from the cable companies. It's been, he's made it very easy for us over the years.
And thank you, Henry, Chairman, for the Comcast studio, Verizon studio. So, again, thank you very much, this is an honor.
Bill, do you want to make a comment on that tie that you're wearing?
Oh, this tie, this tie was given to me by the boosters. I don't know if you can get a shot, hand me a tennis, I can look at the camera out there. It's sweet, it's sweet, but I only wear it on special occasions.
Greenway pride.
Greenway pride. Thank you.
Nicely done. That was very nicely done, thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda, we have a letter from Chief John Nuttall. Dear Board of Selectmen, I would like the Board to be aware of the heroic acts performed by the two members of the Abington Fire Department during the initial phase of a resident's house fire that occurred in December 4th, 2013, at 160 Sharav. This was a house fire involved a large leaking and burning propane tank, which was in the process of being filled from the propane tank delivery truck approximately 30 feet away from the building. Firefighter Jared Driscoll, after hearing the report of a fire, was the first to arrive at the scene while off duty. Without the protection of his firefighting clothing or a fire hose, firefighter Driscoll proceeded past the burning propane tank and into the house to ensure that everyone was out. Captain David Farrell, arriving at the Abington Engine 1, simultaneously ordered a second alarm for mutual aid and assistance, and single-handedly advanced a charged hose directly to the burning tank, placing himself between the fire and a propane truck. This action, in my professional opinion, began to cool the burning propane tank and prevent a catastrophic explosion, which would have compromised the entire propane delivery truck. This action also very likely saved the neighborhood, as well as the lives of other firefighters working at the scene. I am very proud of the actions of the entire Abington Fire Department, as well as the assistance received from the surrounding communities at this incident. However, the efforts of firefighter Jared Driscoll and Captain David Farrell went above and beyond our normal operation standards. Because of their bravery, I am nominated in fifth for the Massachusetts Firefighter of the Year award, as they meet the criteria of its emergency response involving hazardous materials. Respectfully submitted, John Nuttall. Sean?
Thank you, and it's important to remember, too, this incident, this was really a tragic event for the Page family. They lost their home during this incident. And I don't normally notify the Board of the day-to-day operations that we do. That's the reason you have a fire department, we work behind the scenes. Really, you shouldn't know what's going on, hopefully, that a boring day in Abington is actually very good for everybody. I'd rather we not make the news, quite frankly. However, this incident, and what the firefighters faced when they first arrived there, this was a very unique incident, and it really brought some very unique actions from a multitude of the firefighters that responded, but especially firefighter Jared Driscoll and Captain David Farrell, as the selectman Franny just referenced. This fire did occur during the filling operations of a large propane tank, a residential tank, from a large propane truck. Something sparked the incident that's still under investigation. It did appear to be accidental, but we did get the result of a large propane-fueled fire, which was impinging on the tank itself, as well as beginning to run off throughout the home that was affected. We also had an overhead electrical line directly over the tank that failed as a result of the heat, but it was still alive, and that fell down right next to the propane tank in the propane truck, preventing our firefighters from getting close to the tank to shut it down until National Grid could shut down the electricity. Ultimately, Abington received assistance from 10 towns. This ended up going to a three-alarm fire. We also received assistance from the Commonwealth, as well as state fire marshal Steve Cohen showed up. And before I recognize firefighter Jared Driscoll and Captain Dave Farrell, I also just want to recognize many people that were at this incident. Abington Highway, Abington Police, Abington Public Schools did a lot of work behind the scenes, the area towns, and absolutely, certainly, the neighbors in that very tight neighborhood of Sharav. Everybody worked together throughout this incident and after this incident to really help get the family through. Some other individuals, too, was the propane truck driver. He's not here, he's going to remain anonymous, he was also a patient that we transported, but as, his clothing was actually on fire as a result from this, but he had the forethought to stop by his truck and shut off the flow of propane before he finished getting his clothing off, his jacket that was on fire. I want to thank him, I have thanked him personally, and also on behalf of the town of Abington, for his actions, because that certainly also helped to stop this incident from progressing beyond what it really could have been. Firefighter Driscoll, can you come on up? Firefighter Jared Driscoll, and he was the first firefighter to arrive at the scene. He was off duty, he was in a personal vehicle with his girlfriend, and they heard the report of the fire, they saw the smoke, they were right around the corner, he was first on scene, and his actions was, without the protection of any hose line or even his firefighter clothing, he had none of his equipment with him, except for his training. And he went past the burning tank, knowing the hazard, entered the home, he wanted to ensure everybody was out of that home. The truck driver was not to be found at that time, he didn't know if the truck driver was in the building or not, and he cleared the house, which saved very valuable time, which allowed Captain Farrell afterwards to begin to cool the tank. We can't prove it, but we're going to give you half-credit for this. There was some debate with the Rockland Deputy Fire Chief, as well as a Holbrook Lieutenant, as to who found the dog and the cat. We think that by you opening the door, that it definitely, somebody get out. It helped save one of them, and other people are claiming to save the other ones. Either way, the family pets were saved, and we thank you for that. But again, he confirmed that the home was unoccupied, and he saved valuable time at personal risk to himself. We don't condone this, but I thank you for doing that. Here's a citation. Captain Farrell was on duty that day, they had just cleared a medical emergency call. They were responding from that call directly to the fire, they made very rapid time getting to the fire, which was fortunate. The unfortunate event was we lost Engine 2, because Engine 2, their crew was now in the ambulance. So, he did not have a water supply engine to back him up, and he knew this. We did call for mutual aid, but that takes time, they're coming from several towns away. Captain Farrell, upon arrival, noticed the tank, noticed the truck, noticed the tank on fire, and fire impinging on that tank, and his experience and training immediately kicked in, and he immediately ordered a working fire, went right to a second alarm. This is all bringing in more help from surrounding communities, but that takes time. He then placed himself between the fire and the propane truck with a hose line, only operating off of Engine 1's tank of water. He knew that there was no engine coming to help supply water. He was hoping that his pump operator, firefighter Mike Driscoll, who was Jared's dad, working that day, would be able to connect to a fire hydrant and give him a continuous supply of water so he could maintain that, which did occur. Mike, thank you for that. By Captain Farrell doing this action, beginning to immediately cool this tank, in my opinion, he turned this whole event around, he defused a lit bomb, there is no question. This tank, and from what I heard from some of the arriving Whitman and Rockland Fire Officers who were there shortly thereafter, could hear pinging sounds coming from this tank. That's indicative that this tank was going to blow, and it was starting to cool back down again. Dave unquestionably, beginning to cool down that tank, prevented a catastrophic explosion that would have taken both himself and the firefighters with him, as well as any neighbors with him, and realistically, probably would have taken the truck, because it was 30 feet away and could have affected the entire neighborhood. The day after this fire was a boring day in Abington, which is very good, and we can thank Captain Farrell for doing that. Captain Farrell, I want to thank you very much, again, letter for you. Just very quickly, the last few statements, and I did prepare this, just so I, hopefully I didn't forget anybody, but it is the job of the Abington Fire Department to prevent and extinguish, for our community, any fires. However, it is the community, especially in Abington, who always rallies to assist our neighbors after our trucks leave the scene. This was certainly the case on December 4th, as neighbors opened their homes for the family, they offered their garages for the family's salvage belongings, and began fundraising efforts that very night that continue to this day. The conditions the fire crews were presented with on December 4th unfortunately allowed the fire to enter deep into the house, causing major damage. I know the house will be rebuilt, but the community of Abington will once again make it a home for your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before we're going to go to intermission, I think as a town, to go on what John said, we are very lucky to have a highly skilled professional public safety departments, and I think each one of these individuals deserves to be recognized in a special way. And we also are very lucky to come from a kind and caring community, and that was proven by the response that happened after that fire, which isn't the first time something like that's happened, but Abington always comes through. So, again, thank you guys very much, much appreciated. With that, we'll take a short intermission. Thank you, and welcome back. We have at 6:35, a transfer of a roaming license at 86 Railroad Street, Yasir Salch. I'm sorry about the name, I just crucified the name, but what's the, at the very end. Would you like to come up to the podium, please? What's the, at the very end. Do you'd like to come up to the podium, please? Questions on the board?
This is just a trans, this is an existing roaming house, so they're just transferring it to a new owner, correct? Nothing's changed. It's still?
Are there inspections that needed to be done, or are they all done?
I would just ask that you wish to do a final inspection of the building inspector, other than that.
Okay. Does a building inspector routinely go and inspect roaming houses and stuff like that on a yearly basis? Okay?
Yep. He's been out to this one.
Yeah, he did the annual renewal. He already been to the building.
That's correct.
And the fire too, they've been to the building.
That's right.
To the fire department inspected twice for the renewal and for the transfer.
Right.
And building inspected for the renewal.
Okay. I'll move where you approve contingent upon final inspection reports from the various departments.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burbine. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
How many roaming houses are there in Abington?
Four.
Four.
Okay. Approval of minutes, November 25th, 2013, open session.
Move they be approved?
A motion by Mr. Burbine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. In December 2nd, 2013, open session.
Move they be approved?
A motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Donovan.
No, I wasn't.
Mr. Coyle. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to zero, with one upstep. Second, item on your agenda is annual license renewals.
I just asked one question about these.
Yes.
Well, you shook your head no and said yes.
That's because you asked the question.
Meals tax. Have all these people paid up for the meals taxes? Was that prerequisite? I mean, does that have anything to do with this?
The town's bylaw requires that all obligations, taxes, fees, any obligations to any department are fulfilled before licenses are actually distributed. So, anything, any votes you take are, by virtue of the town's bylaw, are contingent upon all obligations being up to date.
Okay. So the licenses we're on the table right now would be entertainment licenses? And these liquor licenses also?
That's correct.
Okay.
And commercial, and, excuse me, class two licenses, roaming houses, and common victory licenses.
Okay, I'd just like to, I'm not gonna...
Yeah, I have a couple. I have to abstain.
I, well, I'm just gonna just announce publicly that I do some occasional work on some of these premises, but, so, Mr. Burbine, you wanna?
There's two that I need to have pulled up. Trukey's, Kenny, you probably do too.
Yep.
And Borderland Service.
Trukey's.
My son's employed at Trukey's now, so I don't remember.
Who is a Borderland?
Borderland. It's a class two.
I let your son go today, so don't worry.
Sorry. Never mind. Just for me, just for Columbus Club.
Oh, we're not doing that yet. You're gonna do all licenses? I was gonna do just the entertainment licenses first, and then do the, the business, you know, we wanna do them all together?
Do them all together.
Okay. Then I'd have to abstain from Bailey's, Eddie Bailey's Garage, my brother-in-law.
All right.
Hold on a second. I want to abstain from Trukey's, as Mr. Burbine said, and tastefully done food.
Tastefully done.
Okay, so, we are going to Bailey's Garage, Trukey's, Borderland Service, and tastefully done. Anything else?
Columbus Club.
Columbus Club. Okay.
If not, I will move that we approve the renewal of all licenses with the exceptions of those stated by the chairman.
Seconding.
Seconding, and as the taxes and everything are up to date on all these things. Okay. Any further discussion? Tom?
Yeah, just on Chief Mugjenski. I think his concerns were noted, but one question I had at 190 North Ave about three or four months ago, somebody came in that I think we approved, an auto sale, in repair shop. I've been led to believe that that person or entity has pulled out, and is this the new entity that's going in there? Or is that just a transfer? Because within about a week or two after we approved it, all the cars, everything was, was gone there, and recently looked like some people were in the process of renovating, and then I, I got word that it has been sold again.
Oh, I know. We'll check into that.
Yeah.
Oh, it was being sold, wasn't it? Is that Bud Little's?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that's why they were here, is to transfer it, contingent on the actual sale of the...
Yeah, but I don't think that the people that were here, I don't think are the people that are there now, Andy. You know, I could be wrong, but it might be one to just make a note.
But these aren't automatic renewals. They had to fill out the paperwork, didn't they?
Correct. We have all the paperwork.
Somebody filled out paperwork for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Donovan has made a motion to all, except for the ones that we took exception to. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. How about we do Trukey's supermarket?
I'll move we approve.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, seconded by?
I'll second.
Mr. Deion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Three, zero, and two abstentions. Bailey's Garage, Kenny, you'd have to run that.
I'll move we approve Bailey's Garage.
I'll second.
Motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, one.
Columbus Club?
Move we approve?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
That's...
Abstain.
Four, zero, one abstention. Borderland?
I'll move we approve.
A motion by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Coyle. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's four, zero, one. And?
Tastefully done.
Tastefully done. That's the last one.
I'll move we approve.
A motion by Mr. Donovan, seconded by? Burbine, Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. That's four, zero, one. Okay. We are flying through this agenda.
It's gonna stop now.
Doesn't have to. Item three is discussion on adoption of revisions to special municipal employee policy.
I will make a motion that we approve as recommended.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or any further discussion? Okay.
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, the next meeting, the list of officials who requested the status would be deliberated on by the board versus the policy that you adopt tonight, if that's what happens. I just wanted...
That's what I would prefer to see happen. I don't know, Andy, if you just wanted to touch real quick on the, on the changes you made, or?
We did last meeting, so I don't...
That's fine, okay.
And they're up on the website, too, and...
Okay. It's fine by me. Okay, any further discussion on adoption of revisions to the policy? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I will say that the administration is happy with the changes.
I was gonna point that out.
It's gonna make their life easier, also.
I was gonna point that out, Mr. Burbine, but I, no, actually, but in all honesty, it does take a large burden off us, and I appreciate that.
Tom, why would you be opposed? You have a reason. I'm just curious.
I think I've stated it in previous sessions, Mike, so not to belabor, but I don't see that it's changed, I guess, the magnitude, where we say that the selectmen believe that special municipal employee status should only be granted in very limited circumstances. Yet, in previous meetings, it seems to be this morphing into, well, if you're a board that is not a policymaking board, or it's a lesser board, or it's something, you get it, but somebody that's a policymaking board doesn't. And then, I just think that when I reviewed it before, and again, we'll see how the vote goes, but it was 80% of the people, after, I think the policy was enacted, that got special municipal employee status. I don't view it as an effective policy, but we'll see how the vote goes. And I do believe that when the state enacted the special municipal employee status, up until that point, nobody had the ability to serve somebody else and represent somebody before a municipal government agency. I think the reason that this was enacted is to give towns the ability to grant that privilege, because that's all it is, and most of the people are just representing soccer boards and, you know, clubs in town for things like licenses and permits and whatever. And I think that Abington, that's what we want to promote. And the third reason is, when I've seen it in execution, on town meeting floor, you know, nobody seemed to want it. So, I guess, I don't feel like we're in tune with a lot of the people that are serving as elected or appointed officials. But I know the feeling of the boredom, you know, I understand, and we've gone through it a lot before. So, again, for me, when you enact a policy, there should be metrics in place. And, again, if we get through the voting on the, I don't know, the 30, 40 or so boards or officials, and it's still 80% of the people that get them are the boards, I see this as ineffective policy. That's the reason I voted against it.
Well, again, just only because you opened the door, Mike. But again, Mike, Tom, the biggest thing about this is we're gonna be reviewing it on an annual basis, which hasn't been done in the past. As I said before, special municipal employee status was granted to virtually every depart, every elected and appointed official back in 2006, and nobody took a look at it from then until now. And I don't think it's a bad thing to take a look on, look at it on an annual basis, and that's basically what we're gonna be doing.
But again, if you look at the, the language, Andy, the modifications didn't loosen what I've heard people say publicly, and that is, you know, I think the chairman was saying that the last meeting is, you know, I've come to grips with it, that if, in effect, if, if you're on a board that isn't policy, or it's, it's a lesser board, then you should get it, but others shouldn't. And I, I have a problem with that, and I think after the vote is taken, we'll see. But I think most of the boards will continue to have special municipal employee status, unless they said they don't want it.
But that's fine. That, that's, again, up to the board, and the board should be exercising that discretion on an annual basis, not every seven, eight, 10, however many years. It's something that we should look at diligently and on a regular basis.
But again, Andy, I'm gonna say, if you look at the second paragraph of your rationale, the board of selectmen strongly believe that in order to promote public confidence in the administration of town government and municipal employees, loyalty must first lie with the town. Pretty strong statement. And then, special municipal employee status should be granted only, only in a very limited circumstance. So, if 80% of the board, of these boards or officials get it, that's not a limited situation. Frankly, I would've expected after, you got, you know, a strong vote the last time, that 80 or 83% of the board shouldn't have got it, but they did.
I, you know what? I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
I, I will, I will admit...
But it didn't go that way, so we'll see how it goes.
And the other thing, since Mike opened the door, but again...
I don't know, open the door. I really, I really, it's, it's important that, you know, we set a policy. There was a lot of discussion about this, obviously, throughout the town. So, no, I, I did wanna know what, you know, I appreciate your honesty on the thing, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
But, but what I was gonna say, Mike, and you and I have talked before, the sports analogy, it's like changing the rules of the game in the middle of the game. And I still feel that this should be voted on after the elections at the end of April, so people know that this policy's in place, and come next June, or whatever, the board's policy is gonna be to vote that basically nobody gets it, and let any existing elected or appointed official, or any that are running, understand that. And if they elect to run, they can factor that into whether they want to serve or not without special employee, special municipal employee status. I don't feel we should be voting on it in January, but again, I, you know, so...
We have kinda, we were supposed to vote on this, I don't know, three or four months ago. It is kinda dragged on. On the thing, I, I would, I mean, I would support January primary, because I would want people to know. I, you know what's important for me on this board, and I was guilty of it, is understand exactly what it's saying. And I think that we, as a board, have to educate the people that are, that hold, it's not a big deal. It's not like, like, like what it was made out to be. I like, I like for somebody, if they have a problem with this, that's on an elected board or something, then they need it. We asked me, I'd like to have that discussion, because maybe it would change my mind. But what I got out of it, and I did a lot of talking with the town, town manager, and our council, and I did call the lawyer of the day, and went over some of the issues I had with it. And it really is, the people that want it were using examples that really weren't quite right, that if they were on a soccer board, or a board of directors of a VFW or Legion, all it was saying was, you really, it's not a level playing field with the eyes of going before the board of selectmen for liquor license if you're serving on another committee or something. So just have somebody else on the board do it. And that's all it was to it. And to me, that's perfectly fair for a level playing field. If somebody's going for the two thing, and one guy's an elected official and the other guy isn't, and he gets denied, he's naturally gonna think that I got it, or I didn't get it, because it was official. That's all it's about. And it's not really saying, it doesn't say that elected officials can, cannot get it. They can get it, you know, but it's up to the board of selectmen to decide. But anyways, I, I didn't wanna yander off, and I did. I thank you for your honesty, though. I do.
Complaining that I'm not always honest.
Okay. So, just to, what, what we should do is notify the boards of the community we would be taking that out. It is the policy, and I think the last time we did it was you could mail it in type thing. I don't want to embarrass anybody to come before us and do that. I would encourage them, you know, if they want an explanation, or they really wanna, then call, and we can discuss it, because maybe it will change my mind. All right? I try to be fair. I want to support volunteerism. There's no doubt about that. So, if that's all right with the board, that's, again, how we should proceed. Okay. Yeah, we did take a vote on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Route 18 widening and proposed update. I had asked the town manager, Rick, to, you know, to put this on. Initially, I saw this meeting on our cable TV in regards to the Conservation Commission. They were at an Waymouth joint meeting with the Waymouth officials, and the Department of Transportation was there and put on a presentation. And it just, it's going to be an enormous adventure for this town to take on that Route 18 widening. The town's not gonna take it on. It's just the town's gonna have to endure a lot of changes as we go through it. And I just wanted the people to be aware that this was, I don't know exactly, Rick, you might know exactly when the proposed date of construction is, but what they're going to do is, is to widen Route 18 to a four-lane highway with sidewalks and a bicycle path, as I understand it. And, and it's gonna go approximately 11 and a half feet beyond what the existing roadway is. So it's going to, if you can envision going up there, they're gonna, the state is gonna take remnant domain through some of these parcels of land on either side of the road, 11 and a half feet, it's gonna expand. And like the chief, fire chief told me, the likelihood is that he will not be able to park the aerial ladder out of, out of the, his building anymore, because it's gonna take up so much of it. But we, Dory, had tried to talk to the Department of Transportation that maybe they could come in. And here's the deal. We have no say in it. We, as a town, have very, the Conservation Commission is the only ones that really have anything to say about this, and that's because of the flooding and the culverts and everything where they should be. And there was, I think, a lot, I think the whole membership was there the other night, you know, and to their credit. So, I had asked Dennis, and then we got a little bit off the mark. We were gonna have the Department of Transportation in here, but they really didn't want to appear at one of our meetings, is what I got. Dory, I don't know if you wanna comment on that.
That's correct. They prefer to send this presentation that we could put up on our website, and they, they didn't want to take away from what they were doing by going to different towns. They were a little bit hesitant as to they'd be going from town to town. However, they did say, if it's, if you absolutely feel the need for them to come in, they will come in on the January meeting. But at this point, they don't... come in on the January meeting, but at this point, they don't want it to just...
Yeah, I would, I think that's fine, if we could put the presentation up on the website, and then if the members are getting, you know, questions from the public, that we might want to go forward. That would be my opinion, but it's up to the board.
Yeah, let them do their meeting with the Conservation Commissioners first.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And maybe, Rick, you can just give a little synopsis of it. It's not, it's going from the Abington-Waymouth line, as far as Abington is concerned, all the way down to 139, I believe, correct?
That's correct, yes. And to some of the points Mike had raised, though, if you look at the presentation, they're at least scheduled to have their design complete by this coming spring, 2014, which would then precipitate a two-and-a-half to three-year construction schedule. So, it also lists the budget as fifty-one and a half million dollars. We might all be skeptical about how that all turns out by the time they're done, but that's the basics, and the details, the construction schedule, that hasn't, that won't be even available until the design phase is completed, so. So, like, so as Dory mentioned, we can put this up on the website. A lot of it's rather technical in terms of some of the, you know, like, bridge, you know, culvert designs, things that don't really, don't probably have much interest to the average citizen, but some of the larger issues may indeed have some interest. So, we can, we can at least get that out there for now and see what we can get down the road in terms of some DOT presentation here, or even on a regional basis, if that works out better.
Yeah, basically, I just wanted the residents to know that this was in the process of happening, and it's going to be a pretty dramatic change to, you know, that area of town, so.
Have the residents in the businesses that are going to be affected by this been notified? They've all been, other than, I mean, they've actually been contacted by, do we know?
What I got out of, what I got out of the meeting, yes, they had. They had been, and part of it was going to be taken by the state of eminent domain. So, I mean, it's a good question, but I believe they went over that at the meeting, at the Waymouth thing, that they had, in fact, gone over some of, because some of the properties is going to go, you know, it's going to really incur quite a, quite a meaningful change to them. So, I'll check with Dennis and get back to you on that, and we can have, maybe have Dennis come in, but, all right, any further questions?
At what point do we want to have a DOT representative come in and meet with us?
You know, that's up to the board. I don't know, like, Rick's point is, they're in the design aspect of it right now, which is, we're going to have no say in. The only say is, is the Conservation Commission is going to protect the town as far as where the waters go, and, you know, follow any regulations incurred from wetlands. And other than that, they pretty much, this is, you know, the Department of Transportation, this is what we're going to do, we're going to widen that road, you know, actually, it's, I think that road's going to become a four-lane highway, right all the way down to the expressway, I believe, is the long-range plan for it.
Yeah, as far as, I think after the design is completed, I think would probably be, and a construction schedule has been put together, I think that would be a good time to have somebody physically present to answer questions. And again, there may be forums scheduled on a larger basis for that, but I would think at least until the spring, that would be about the time that we'd be looking at.
Okay. Any further questions, Tom?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I've had several residents approach me in that they seem to think that the cause of this is the potential buildout at Southfield, but my understanding is, regardless of what happens at Southfield, that the DOT has determined that the amount of traffic on the road now warrants widening it, so I just want to make sure that people understand that, that it's got nothing to do with Southfield or what's happening over at the base. It's just basically traffic flows going up into Boston, I think, or that road, that anybody that's traveled it knows that it's pretty congested now, so.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly, too, I mean, years and years ago, they talked about this and actually met with some of the residents, I think, and talked about eminent domain, if I remember, I was on, I think on the Finance Committee, they talked about it, if I remember, and this has been before Southfield was even, you know, before the policy was...
Yeah, I think you're right.
So, I think, you know, you're correct, Tom.
I think you're both right, and I try not to agree with you that often, so. Okay, any further discussion? Item five is discussion of recent history of certified tax rates. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Chairman, I approach you and the town manager, but we had a meeting, I believe it was on November 1st, before the town meeting, the Board of Assessors came in and made a presentation on this year's property tax information, and I think we sort of talked about getting back to the public. I haven't really seen anything published on what's happening with tax rate valuations, tax increases, so I just want to go through this brief synopsis of what people in the town can expect as far as the single-family tax information for this year. And basically, to start off, Abington's FY 2014 tax rate has been set at seventeen dollars and nineteen cents by the Department of Revenue. The FY 2014 full and fair market assessment for the average single-family home in Abington is two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five, as compared to two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, four-thirty-eight during FY 2013. That reflects a 2.2% decrease in the value for the average residential home on a year-over-year basis. The owner of that average single-family home can expect to pay an additional 1.7% or seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents in property taxes for FY 2014, ending on June 30th, 2014. Residents need to be reminded that this increase is based on the average property value of two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five, and that each resident's property tax situation will be different based on the home valuation. Could be more, could be less. It needs to be pointed out that the debt service for both the Griffin Dairy Land Purchase and Phase IV sewer expansion project in the amount of six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, approximately, were phased out during FY 2013, resulting in this modest property tax increase this year. The assessors report that new growth of single-family homes on a year-over-year basis continues to be slow. Only eleven new homes were added to Abington's single-family parcel base of three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine during the past year. Property tax bills are anticipated to be mailed out no later than the week of December 23rd. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Hopefully after Christmas, although I guess it hurts either way, doesn't it?
Yeah, yes, it does.
You know, for more information, contact the Selectmen's Office at 982-2100, or the Assessors' Office at 982-2107. And then, I guess I'd like to see if the committee would want to put this up on the website, so people can take a look at the, you know, the information and look at it over the last four years.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
That's fine.
Thank you for doing that, Tom, actually, you know...
My old assessors' blood.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Deion? Okay, item, we don't need a vote on that, we're just, item six is Town Manager's Report.
Yes, a few items. First, we did open the bids on the, for the masonry work on the arch this past Friday. We've received four bids, and two of them were relatively close, and we had some outliers. Those are the bids are being analyzed right now by the construction manager, and we should have a report hopefully as early as next week. Obviously, our concern is going to be how much of the funding is available for the final piece, the smaller pieces, actually, the bronze work, so masonry work is the overwhelming majority of that, so. So, that was Friday, so like I said, we should have a report due fairly soon, within a week or so, on where we think that bid is going. Second, we also had a proposal for the Strawberry Valley Golf Course. There was one, only one proposer, and we are going through the process of putting together the proposed contract with the existing vendor, and that was, as you can see by the report, we did go through the process. The Golf Course Committee did rank the proposal to make sure it met minimum requirements, so you can look forward to probably at your next meeting, the executing a contract on that at the recommendation of the Golf Course Committee.
Rick, just, that's the current operator who...
It is, yes, yes. We expected at least one more, but they were ultimately the only proposer. I forwarded to you this past week the final report of the Road Safety Audit of North Quincy Street and Chestnut Intersection. Right now, the short-term issue is in the hands of the City of Brockton Traffic Commission with regard to some of the issues that have been cited. Again, you could, I'm sure you've all looked at that, but for the, if the public is interested, we can certainly make that available, too. I know there's some residents who have been interested, and we've been keeping them informed all along as to any of these developments. The Chestnut Street Hancock Street Road Safety Audit was rescheduled because of the impending snowstorm this past week, which turned out to be a good call on behalf of Old Colony Planning Council, so that, when that's rescheduled, we'll let you know. We're in the process of putting together the lease purchase, as voted for the new ambulance, as was approved by town meeting, so you probably have that at your next meeting, too, to execute that lease purchase agreement. And as you can see by the attachment, I do have a scope of services for a human resources audit. As I've expressed to you in the past, I think that's something that's long overdue, and to make sure that the town is complying with all the requirements, legal, legal requirements of both, you know, state, federal, with regard to our human resources operation here. I know intuitively, there's some gaps that we hope to close. We will be looking at, the scope is for about six thousand dollars, and I do hope to try to find some funding. At the worst-case scenario, we'll be me writing a letter to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, informing them that we'd, how we'd like to propose funding this. I'd rather not wait until an annual, a town meeting to be able to move this forward, as, in my opinion, these things are building blocks for other issues that we're trying to deal with, so.
How long does that process take?
It actually should probably only take a few weeks. The goal here is to get a qualified human resources, municipal human resources professional in here, and have that person go through our personnel files, our policies, procedures, you know, multiple checklists of various laws that we need to be in compliance with, and see how we're doing, make recommendations. The work starts after that, and will probably take quite a long time, but that's okay. That's okay, that's what we're here for, so.
Rick?
Yes.
Is there any effort to make technology recommendations as part of this audit? In other words, you know, more and more companies, organizations are going to systems where it's almost self-directed, the employee puts in their sick time, you know, those sorts of things, as opposed to today? Doesn't each department handle that?
As of right now, each department sends their, again, their handwritten sheet to the, to the collectors, the treasurer, the treasurer's office, and documentation is kept there as to benefit accruals. So, it's not, it's not put in electronically into a system, it's approved, if I'm correct, it's still, it's still done in a sense, the old-fashioned way. I don't know, that's a good question, Tom, I can, I can, I don't know, that's generally not, although it may be a recommendation, it's not part of the scope, but this is really a matter of us making sure that we're complying with all of our legal requirements, so.
Can I just comment on that? I just wanted to be clear on that, too, as well. The treasurer-collector generates a report based on all the information that he gets from all the various departments, and that report can be given to any department per request, and it's submitted on a probably semi-annual basis to check that everybody's on the same page.
Couple other brief items, and I usually, I try to be briefer than this, but at the last meeting, it was, the issue was raised as to where we stand with regard to seeking a veterans' district. And I told you I'd give you an update at this meeting. Going back a little bit in time, that the, my counterparts in Whitman and Hanson, we had a discussion about whether or not it would be appropriate for the three of us to form a district. Hanson determined that they were not prepared to do so. I guess you'd say, for lack of a better term, the momentum somewhat petered out a bit on that project. It did come to our attention that Whitman was still interested, and so we have been pursuing that with the town of Whitman. We expect, and again, you can see by my dialogue here, that the town administrator in Whitman is willing to take the bull by the horns and put together a joint application to the Department of Veteran Services. Our goal would be to have a veterans' district approved if we can meet the requirements of that district, which I believe we can, going in the next fiscal year. The goal here is not to save a lot of money, because if we, I think with three towns, we had the opportunity to save more money, at least administratively. I think with the two towns of Whitman and Abington, we can save some money, not big money, but I think it provides us the opportunity to get some, and I don't mean at the agent level, per se, but at the administrative level, to really get the administrative support for what is, you know, a somewhat complicated process dealing with the state and federal government, surprise, than we have the capacity to have on our own as a small town. So, that is the goal, and so, and the timetable, as I said, would be July 1st, so. And again, I, as time goes on, I certainly welcome your input on that, but I have not received any indications to date that anyone believes that this would not be, that we could not administratively do this. I don't think that's the issue. The issue is to demonstrate that we can service the needs at least as well as we do now with the veteran population. And I think our biggest concern and biggest challenge has been for years, the administrative side of this, and I think that's, you probably know that as well as I do, so. Two other quick things, and I'm sorry to...
Can I stop you on that for a second?
Please do.
You had mentioned that the Whitman Town Administrator is a veteran himself, Frank Lyman?
Yes, he is, yes.
So, that's kind of reassurance for the seniors that are worried about losing their town, you know, using their representative, because now, at least, he'll look out for them and make sure that the proposal he gives to us will, you know...
I, yes, I would agree, and I think that has given me some comfort, too, because obviously, he may be on the receiving end in his home community of those benefits someday. Not that this is an issue of self-interest, but because of their issues they've had in Whitman over the years with filling that position, and I don't know intimately what those are, I, he has a much better grasp than I do on the administrative requirements, because he's had to get more personally involved to deal with their issues, so that's a, that's a good point. Two other brief things, there is a Board of Health vacancy, as you know, it has been advertised, the timeframe for applications is closed, and we plan to schedule a joint meeting of the Selectmen and the Board of Health at your next scheduled meeting on the 13th. And finally, just this, if I would have given you a previous update on this, but it just came in today, the Tri-Town Board of Directors did meet with their, with their developer, Starwood, today, and, oh, I'm sorry, they did not meet with Starwood, they met together to discuss the situation at hand and voted to forward a letter to Starwood notifying them that they're in default of their obligations under their contract, and give them thirty days to get into compliance. So, I think we were all at the meeting last week and have a pretty good handle on the developments to date, so that just is in today, and as I get more information, I will, whether it's in the form of emails or other literature, I'll forward that along to you.
Thank you. Questions?
Okay. Two things, and I guess they're both around the Highway Department. Usually, we've been updated on the snow budget, obviously, it just started, but maybe we can be updated on that as it comes, you know, the money that's getting spent.
Sure.
We can have a handle on, you know, what the budget is versus what's being used, and talking about the highway and...
You won't like the answer, but when I get it to you, but I will get you an update.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, I saw, it was icy last night, I saw him out there, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And the Highway Department, the status on that, do you have a plan in place to replace the Highway Superintendent, or you touched briefly upon it at the last meeting, I think?
We have, we are collecting and have collected a number of different models, the, for a DPW organization. Right now, the problem, the dilemma is, and of course, our interim superintendent, Jack Kane, is in the middle of it, for which I feel bad. You know, we have a charter that somewhat restricts the expansion of a Department of Public Works beyond just highway, park, and rec. As I've mentioned to members of the board before, I've had discussions with some of the sewer commissioners and sewer administration, and they are not opposed to sewer department being part of a broader organization, and that's, hence the different models that we're looking at, where you build in an enterprise or a special revenue account into a larger DPW, and as you know, there's loads of organizations like that, so. Key question is, what becomes the role of Sewer Commission? It's probably not a likely scenario to have, to build in a water department where we've got the joint water works with Rockland, that may be a little too complicated in the short term. I think what my thing, my suggestion is going to be to broaden the charter language that a... allows for more flexibility by the Board and the Town Manager to build an organization that isn't locked into charter requirements. So that has put any, a damper on the process of filling that position permanently, because we're not, I think eventually, we're all going to have to decide what that position's going to look like. And as I mentioned, I feel bad for the people who are caught in the middle of that limbo, but I can't really do a whole lot about that today. Kenan needed to stay another six to nine months, and I've told him that already, but he won't come back for six to nine months, so.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a couple of things. I had emailed you and Mike an email from a resident up in the muster field about the MBTA issues.
Yes.
If that's something we can maybe follow up with on the, at the next meeting.
To your point, the lady mentioned horns, the train horns blowing at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. And I don't doubt that that happened. This is a very credible person that, why, the question I would have is, we can find out before we have that meeting, why would it happen at that time? Why would there be trains?
I think I can tell you, they're on the way down to Kingston to begin the morning route, and they bring the trains down in the middle of the night, and they're required, well, because of the current requirement, to blow the horn at the, at the station. I hear it, too. I mean, there's no, I don't doubt it at all, because I hear it.
I really don't care that you hear it. It's just.
But, no, but it is, it's the train going down to Kingston to begin the route. There was a problem, in the beginning, they let the trains stay in Kingston, but in the winter, they would idle all night long, which created problems in Kingston. So I believe now, they, and you can double-check, but I believe that's what they do, is once they finish with all the routes, then they actually bring the train down to Kingston to begin the morning route.
Okay.
And they do, and the horn does blow at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, because I, I've heard it.
Well, the question I would have, where it's that early in the morning, and virtually nobody around, could we have, I know it's a requirement, but I think the town or maybe the state could.
Yeah, that question, I don't know. I, I mean, it's a very valid one, because obviously, right in that area, there are, there's a lot of grade crossings, so if they're going to lay on the horn at that hour of the morning, I would totally agree.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it seems like there are some areas of the state where they, they don't blow the horns.
That's true, and it may be, it may be that there can be a moratorium, you know, and again, we'd have to vet this out, but I'm just suggesting the possibility may exist as a moratorium.
Didn't we specifically ask them to blow, blow the grade crossings in Abington years ago?
We did, we have, positively. That's what I'm saying.
But they go in, and I understand the problem, they're trying to make a schedule or a deadline and stuff like that, so that, you know, but when they go in in the middle of the night, they don't have to travel at those speeds.
I know, but those are questions.
Yes.
So, I mean, yeah.
We can certainly pose questions to MBTA, but it would seem that the Board would like to have the, somebody from MBTA into that discussion.
We've had them before, and sometimes they have alleviated some of the problems a bit, but.
Okay, so that has been productive in the past, so if we can get an MBTA.
Want to ask them for the next meeting?
Very good.
Well, maybe if you wanted to talk to the resident first and see what.
Yes, we will do that, but it doesn't sound like there's much debate as to whether the credibility of the claims.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no, it's definite.
Oh, no, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah, it's just, it sounds like it's a matter of.
Well, I am concerned about Kevin's credibility.
Well.
I hear it. I can lend my voice to it.
Certainly, certainly any.
If we have them in, I guess my point would be, we'd want to notify the neighbors up there in the muster field, so they'd have the opportunity to be here also.
I think it may be to even go one step further to ask, is there a remedy? And what would that remedy be, rather than have the person coming down and say, well, Jesus, if you people decide you want to do this, you've got to do X, Y, and Z. That way, we've got, we've got a thought process ahead of the time. And it may very well be that maybe administratively, because of the hour of the night, they can rectify it. I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. Well, for now, what we'll do is we will, I will contact the complainant, and we will also contact MBTA and ask these questions, and it would, which would appear to be something that will end up in front of you early in 2014.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The other thing is, as part of your contract, Rick, is the review, your annual review, is that coming, are we supposed to be starting that up at this point?
Well, it's supposed to be in January. I was, again, where Rick started in kind of a late.
June.
I don't know if we want to delay that a month or two. What's the feeling of the board?
You follow whatever the contract says.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, in January? That's fine.
Obviously, it's not going to be a very comprehensive one, because you haven't been here long enough, but I think just so we do it, you know, in accordance with the contract, I think we should, yeah.
All right, no problem.
My opinion, but.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Sounding loyally tonight.
Any further discussion? If not, I would.
Tom has.
I'm sorry, Tom.
Just, I guess maybe under Selectmen's comment and one man's opinion, I've just been making notes here, and just my feeling, not only serving on this board, but just in general, is, to me, we should try to gear meetings to no more than a couple of hours, and just looking at all the stuff we've gone over tonight, you know, Memorial Arch, you're going to give an update at the next meeting, Chestnut Street, Hancock Street, potentially, Financial, which to me is, is a key element, ambulance lease purchase, a report, human resource audit, veterans' district, and now we've got DPW, MBTA, SMES, and potentially Town Manager review. That sounds to me like it's going to be more than two hours, and could be wrong, and.
No, that, he's just reporting.
No, no, I know, but.
Administrative actions, we're not going to be dealing with those issues.
No, but I think we will be talking about sending up a review process and who's responsible for what. My only point, Kevin, is I think after you get by two hours, and if you load up the agenda too much, it, it just sorts of breaks down at, at the end, so.
No argument here, but.
What's that?
I said, no argument here, but I think, I think that the issues that he's reporting on are more administrative in nature, and I don't view that, that we're going to be dealing with a lot of that stuff.
But SMES, I mean, there's potentially 30, 40 votes, but it's my, only my feeling is that if we could break it out into, you know, smaller, smaller segments, I think it might be more effective or efficient, because it, I think anybody wants to be sitting here at 8:30, 9:00, you know, and we haven't even talked about any executive sessions as far as collective bargaining.
Meet every week.
What's that?
Meet every week, and then.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying meet every week, but.
Do it after 8:00.
We go, we've been on a, for holidays and stuff like that, we've only been meeting once the last two months, and we go back.
Very well.
Two, two.
And.
We go to the two, two a month next Saturday, January, so.
Yeah, not to interrupt, but at the next meeting in January, we do have Town Council lined up for an executive session litigation update. At that point, we'll also have a collective bargain update for you. I meant to mention that.
On the 13th?
Forgot, yes. Is that a problem?
No, just protest.
Well, I mean, I know, Mike, you agree with Tom. I agree that we don't want meetings that stretch on for three and four, but you guys want to take care of the agenda if something, if it looks over.
Push it off till the next one.
Yeah, I mean, let's face it.
Set priorities as to what really has to be done.
We've had that special municipal employee status on the last 18 agendas.
But I just. You're not going to be the swing vote, so.
You're the one that had to ask them. You had to ask them.
Well, I was curious, that's all.
I just know when you get into executive session and you're starting at 8:30 and 9:00, it's just not productive for both sides, and, again, it just, you know, no criticism intended, it's just.
We have had, when we had heavy negotiations and executive session, we've actually.
At separate meetings.
At separate meetings. I wholeheartedly agree with you. I think you, you know.
What time do we, what time do we settle that fire contract?
After midnight.
11:03.
No, it's more like 1:00.
Yeah, yeah. No, there's a lot to be, you see the same thing happen at town meeting. People just, you know, they're there long enough, and they want to go. So anyway, your point.
Sorry, it wasn't, fear wasn't public.
We would have been out of here 10 minutes ago.
Hadn't asked that question. Okay, anything further to be said?